Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the September twenty seventh, two thousand and twenty-two Board of Selectmen meeting. I have a roll call, please.
Good evening. We have at this meeting tonight, Mr. Jared Chadwick, Mr. Alan Slaven, Ms. Judith Whiteside, Ms. Tricia Wertz, Selectmen, and Mr. Richard Bowen, Town Attorney.
Mr. Sullivan will not be joining us this evening. We have the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Bowen, please.
My apologies. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Let's see, announcements. Mr. Slaven?
Good evening, everyone. First off, for those of the Jewish faith, basically Happy New Year, Shana Tovo. This is in the Jewish religion, year five thousand seven hundred eighty-three. This is a reference point. We basically celebrated New Years yesterday and today, approximately eight days from today. We will also celebrate a holiday called Yom Kippur, which is known as the Day of Atonement, which basically means that you do not drive, do not carry money, do not do any kind of work whatsoever, not even shave or anything else. If you want to go to temple, you have to walk. And it's basically a day to do nothing. Also, you fast for twenty-four hours. It's always a joy when you get old to do those things. Because of that holiday, which is the highest holiday in the Jewish religion after the Sabbath, we will not be meeting next Tuesday. We're meeting on Thursday to basically honor the Jewish holiday and to assist myself, because I could not attend on Tuesday because of the holiday. And the other piece that was a really great time this past Saturday, Kat showed to the OBA put on what they call the Harvest Moon Festival, which is a redo of a program that used to be for years ago, what they had in Wareham for a long time. A lot of people missed it and had to give Kat and her crew credit paper, put this together. We, myself and Paul Gerard, basically agreed to go ahead and do a cash show in conjunction with that. We surprised a lot of people. We actually got the Police Department, John Gerard, to go ahead with us and allow us to actually use the pier and block off a good portion of onset after park cars as well. It was interesting to get it all done. I think I probably drove John crazy, teasing about how many cars were going to show up, et cetera. But I really need to thank them for allowing us to do this. Nobody thought this would ever happen. And they went out of their way to make it work also. Fire Chief Oswald from the Onset Farm and Water District Fire Department, and also Chief Kelly from the Wareham Fire Department. It was interesting having the big command truck there and everything else going on, but it really went off well. We had many people stop us and say, "Thank you." And this was the best cash show they've ever been to all year. So we hope this is the start of an ongoing event that will be there every year going forward. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chadwick? None? Okay. Ms. Wertz, announcements?
No, I don't have any really, other than, um, nothing, other than I'm watching Florida hurricane for all the family that's down there.
Okay, thank you. I just want to say a couple of thank yous. Alan beat me to it on the Harvest Moon Festival. I want to say that in the past week, I've seen some of the most outstanding photographs on different pages of rainbows and fireworks and SpaceX launchings. And the other thing that I've seen, and I continue to see it, is that people, without any fanfare, are picking up areas of town, making trash sweeps through them. And I thank all of them. One of the ladies who does it, Little Harbor, was actually, there was an article about her in the paper. She goes every day with her dog and a baby carriage thing. And unfortunately, she picks up cigarette butts and a whole bunch of other stuff. And she takes all of the trash home to her own trash and throws it away that way. I don't understand how people continue to trash our beaches, our roads, or any of that. I know a lot of the young people, younger generation, younger than my generation, pick up around the Deacon School underpass, railroad underpass, as well as up near Pumpkin Town Road. And those are areas that are just plain, they're revolting. And I don't understand people trashing their backyard. And that's it. So we have no appointments, no reappointments, no interviews. We have no licenses and permits. We have a fairly fair, fairly full agenda this evening. And what I want to do is have us vote on Article seven A first, which is accepting, approve the surety bond for something that's being done in town, which we have to do. But the other thing that I'm going to say is that each of the proponents of one of the articles that is listed on our agenda has been told that they have a two-minute limit to do a presentation of what it is that their warrant article is looking for. I will then ask that the Board of Selectmen, if you have questions, that you raise your hand and I'll go around and let you ask the questions. Because we do have a presentation later on in the meeting, and I expect that that will take a fair amount of time. And I do want the Board to be able to ask questions of Fussin' O'Neill regarding the Parker Mills Dam. So, the very first article, the very first thing that we would be doing, I would look for a motion to approve the surety bond for the Woodland Cove project on Red Brook Road. This is a standard form that we have to approve. This is for the road improvements that are going in into the Woodland Cove project.
I make a motion to take a vote to approve the surety bond for the Woodland Cove project on Red Brook Road.
Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second the motion.
Okay. Is there any further discussion on motion, Mr. Slaven?
Consistent with my history for a long time, I've never been a fan of the surety bonds with insurance companies. What happens is the company that's putting this bond up, basically turns around and sells the bond almost immediately. And it could change hands two or three times. And what happens is after the one year, whatever the timeframe is, they put it there, they have to notify us of the status of the bond, et cetera. And I've always said I'd rather have cash. Of course, nobody wants to give us cash, but you know, I can ask, so I'm going to vote against it just because of principle of the way, I think. The other part is, of course, it's Woodland Cove, and this has never been an easy project for the town of Wareham. It's been contentious all the way through and still is. And I don't have a lot of faith, so at this point here, just letting you know, I'll be voting against it for my personal reasons.
Thank you. I have a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion? Yes, Ms. Wertz?
I just have a question to Mr. Slaven. Mr. Slaven, have you ever seen any of these surety bonds fail that we have not received the money?
Not so much fail, but what happens is they actually lapse, and we're not notified. That's the issue. But that's part of the contract. And, you know, it's hard to say who you go after. But it's just my personal opinion. I love to see cash in a bank. But, you know, at this point here, it's just the way I feel about it. It's not the way the Board should vote.
Thank you. Any further discussion? There's a motion to approve, and I will, Mr., go for a roll call about Mr. Slaven?
No.
Ms. Wertz?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Three zero, three one zero. Thank you very much. Next, we're going to have, in the meeting, we are going to have, let's see, Sandra Slaven and David Hurd enter the meeting, please. They are going to be talking about Articles seven, eight, nine, and ten, which are CPC articles. They both know that they have two minutes. And I will just let all of you know that these basically are standard articles that come up annually. So, good evening, Ms. Slaven and Mr. Hurd. Which one of you is going to be doing the presentation? Article seven, which would be the unused funds from the WRA two hundred thousand. David, you're muted. Mr. Hurd, you're muted. Yes, I can hear you now. Go ahead.
David Hurd, Article seven, to see if the town will vote to transfer two hundred thousand dollars to the Community Preservation Undesignated Funds Account from the Tremont Nail Freight Building Restoration Project Unexpending Funds, which were approved in the two thousand eighteen Spring Special Town Meeting, Article eight, or to do or act in any matter relative thereto. And to explain it, this project has been canceled. Unexpended funds must be returned to the Community Preservation Act funds.
And the WRA did vote unanimously to return the funds, because it was under their, just that the money was presented. Are there any questions of Mr. Hurd on this article? Okay. What I forgot to say is we're going to go through all of the articles and not vote until the end of the meeting. I want to kind of move along. And then if we have things that we want to discuss heavily, we'll do that. The next one would be Article eight, the Tremont Nail Remediation Project. Which one of you is discussing that one, please?
I can take it. It's just the standard principal interest that is due on the bond that was taken when the town body voted to voted to borrow money to rehab the land at Tremont Nail.
And the total payment, I'll just read it out loud, is two hundred twenty-seven thousand, two hundred eight dollars and ninety-nine cents. It's principal and interest.
The pay, that covers all payments made in FY twenty-three.
Right. And it's principal and interest. Any questions of, from any of you on this article? No? Okay. Next, we would go to the Community Preservation Fund Reserves Adjustment, which would be Article nine?
Article nine. Right. Article nine. To see if, this again is a standard vote. I believe they all are.
Yes.
But we got actually more money from the state than we had anticipated originally. And the Community Preservation Committee is required by law to reserve ten percent of the fiscal year's revenue for historic preservation, affordable housing, and open space slash recreation reserves. In fiscal twenty-two, we estimated CPA revenue of one point three million. However, the state increased its CPA funding. And the actual for twenty-two was one point five eighteen thousand, an increase of one hundred eighteen thousand. So we need to increase the amount in the Affordable Housing Reserve by ten percent of that two hundred and eighteen thousand. Undesignated funds were approved for both historic preservation and open space and recreation. An increase in these reserves is not required.
Thank you. Do you have any, any one of you have any questions? Please raise your hand. Seeing none, I'll go on to the next one, which would be Article ten, payment on the Little Harbor Country Club acquisition.
Yes, this is payment of the interest and principal on that, on that bond that was taken for the purchase of the fifty-four acres at Littleton, at Little Harbor Club.
Thank you. Are there any questions of Ms. Slaven? Seeing none? Thank you very much. And have a nice evening. Do you have any questions of us? Mr. Hurd or Ms. Slaven? No, of course.
Something to consider. Can this, why not put this on the consent agenda? It's normal run rate CPA articles.
I think.
Something for Mrs. Moderator to, Margaret Ishihara, to consider.
Yes, I've already taken note of your suggestion and will make it, I do have a conference call with her tomorrow, and we'll make that suggestion based on your request or your suggestion. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, great. Next on the agenda would be the sewer Articles fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, and nineteen. So Mr. Giberti and Mr. Campina should be let into the meeting, please. Because Ms. Slaven is a sewer commissioner, she can stay if she'd like. Otherwise, she can leave. Do you choose to leave, Ms. Slaven?
I'll stay on.
Okay, thank you. The first one, again, Mr. Giberti and Mr. Campina, thank you for joining us this evening. In two minutes or less, can you please explain Article fifteen, which is the clarifier upgrades?
God, you.
Article fifteen.
I thought the articles were engineering funding. Did you want, that's, I'm thinking.
Yes, it's, yes, engineering costs for WPC project clarifier upgrades. That's the first one.
Yes, there's two million dollars for the engineering of the clarifiers to, to, part of the SRF funding is to provide engineering plans. And if we are to win the SRF funding, we would need to move forward with engineering plans for the clarifier. So we're asking for the two million dollars to be borrowed, so we can move forward with that project subject to being accepted in January.
Could you explain, please, what SRF stands for?
I'm sorry. It's State Revolving Fund. It's, it's money ported aside by the state of Massachusetts. It's probably through the federal government. Probably, I think some of this is from the, what am I saying, the infrastructure bill. And so it goes into a pool, the state's responsible, they put it into a big pool. It's a, it's a, if you will, a bank. And then we apply for that funding. It's a competitive competition, a competitive process. The state will select the projects they want to fund and notify us in January if we were the ones selected to the funding.
Thank you.
It's very competitive.
Thank you. Or do any of my board members have any questions? Please raise your hand. Ms. Wertz, you're muted.
And I'm going to ask your patience with me, because I'm learning this job as we go. This two million dollar funds is to develop plans only, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And the state will not give us funds for the plan. They may approve funds after they see the plan. Is that correct?
Yes.
And, and are these, are the funds for this type of plan ever funded through grants or any other way than a bond or a loan?
No. I kind of answered that. I don't know of any grants that would pay for this.
That's all I needed. I think I was seeing, besides Jimmy saying no, Judith was vehemently saying no. So I have my answer.
Thank you. Any other questions on this particular article? No? Okay, let's move on to the next. Oh, Mr. Chadwick, I'm sorry.
Yes. Now, forgive my stupidity here, if this is a stupid question here, but I'm reading this here, says, "I move that the town vote raise appropriate and/or transfer two million from available funds and authorized borrowing subject to MGL Chapter forty-four, Section seven or eight." So my question is borrowing there. Is there, is there a plan of return of pay with a percentage that we have to pay on top of that?
Mr. Giberti or Ms.?
I'm not sure I understand the question. Is there interest in this thing?
Yes.
I, say it again. Yes, there's, and I don't know what that interest is, it'd be whatever we can borrow for. But there'd be interest in anybody you borrow. I would suggest there would be interest.
Okay.
And I don't know what that interest is at this point in time.
You know that the feds is hammering us. Mr. Slaven?
Just for clarification, Mr. Sullivan's not here. It gives you several different sources for the funds. And one of the sources is retained earnings for the water pollution control facility, also, which most likely will come from there.
Correct.
So that, in the motion, and again, they may still be working on where the money would be coming from. But they do have, we'll call it retained earnings, or funds that they could pay for out of their funds without the borrowing, which is what Mr. Slaven is saying.
But you have to have that in the motion in order to be able to have the availability if necessary.
Right. But the motion is, the motion that I have in front of me allows you to do either borrow or to use the, yeah.
Yeah, correct.
I wasn't sure if there, I wasn't sure if there was just a direct
No.
borrow agency you got involved.
No, no, okay. Can you, I guess, let's forestall the next question. How much money is there available in the sewer retained earnings fund or the borrower account?
I can't answer that. I think Mr. Sullivan's working on that. And I would ask his guidance on that. But I cannot answer exactly what is. Last I knew was five million, but that was a while ago, and I think it was last year. So I don't have a definitive answer.
Thank you. Mr. Giberti, do you have it?
The last number I had was a six million, but that was after the expenses, my expenses. I had money that we had to have set aside by law
Okay.
in there. So the total dollars that are in the fund, I'm unsure of.
Thank you. Okay, let's move on to the next one, which would be the two million dollar request for the headworks, which would be the engineering costs for the headworks. Could Mr. Campina or Mr. Giberti explain what headworks are, please?
Mr. Campina can.
Headworks. It is the primary process, the first process that the lawsuit enters, leaving the pump stations entering the treatment plant. It's where the screening will remove the non-flushables, that we don't flush, we remove those. The grits and sands and inorganic matter, inorganic, they're removed there. So generally speaking, there's a lot of H two S. It's also where you have your biofilter to remove the corrosive hydrogen sulfides, et cetera, et cetera. So this building was, I think it was two thousand and five, or online, and it is deteriorated. So we have to replace it. And all the components within the building, they may salvage the building itself, electrical components, the fire line components, the biofilter, the screens, the grit cyclone, the septic receiving, all those components need to be replaced.
Okay. Okay, so again, this is the engineering cost to replace the current headworks, which date to two thousand and five.
That is correct.
Okay, good. Any questions from any of my members? Please raise your hand. Seeing none, we'll move on to the next one, which would be the engineering cost for Swift Beach Smith Street Lines. Which one of you would like to tackle that one?
You can have it, Jim.
Oh, thank you very much.
Excuse me, can, can my board members please mute themselves?
Okay, this is basically for the insulation of the low-pressure sewer lines for Swift Beach, to try to get ahead of the I and I problems that we have down there. That would be feeding this Smith Street pump station. And this is the engineering plans that are required in order to be able to apply for the SRF funding. As with the two previous articles, if we don't do this, we can't even apply.
Okay. And again, I and I is?
Infiltration, then. Drawn a blank there, guy.
Mr. Campina?
Infiltration, infiltration, which is groundwater, entered into the pipes that are, I think they're all asbestos pipes with health for Swift Beach, which are deteriorating, and inflow, which is roof leaders, sump pumps, things of that sort.
Thank you. Do any of my members have any questions? Raise your hand, please. Nope. Okay, we'll move on to the next one, which would be Line Force, Article nineteen, Line Force Main, from Narrows to the plant, I guess.
This.
Three million dollar ask.
No.
Oh, excuse me, this is a rescind of a three million dollar article.
Yes.
Can you explain that, please?
This article was approved before for three million. The bids came in well in excess of that. We felt it was more practical to rescind this article and then go to the next article. We're asked to rescind the three million dollars from Article seventeen, from the Springtown meeting.
Okay. So then, what you then are going to be doing is asking for six millions all. And what would you be doing with that money?
We're going to be basically doing the same thing with that money. We were going to do with, potentially doing with the three, and that's to reline the forced main from the Narrows down to the plant.
And where does that line go, please?
From the Narrows pump station, right at the Narrows Crossing, down to the plant itself, right down Minut Avenue, and across.
Okay, so it goes down Minut and then across?
Right.
It goes across the bridge, down, I think the first part is Narrows Road or whatever, then it could change into Minut. It was all the way down Minut, just beyond the new school. It takes a lap, it goes under the river, comes up on the other side of the river, and then heads up to the headworks building of the treatment plant.
Okay.
One point nine miles.
Okay. What would happen, Mr. Campina or Mr. Giberti, if one of, if this line were to fail?
We close the town down.
It, it, everything. I would suggest that the enterprise would fail. I'm sorry.
Yeah.
What, you mean the plant would fail?
Well, yes, because, yes, you have two other main pump stations that would bring sewer from the six and twenty-eight area and onset. But that side of Wareham, you'd have no sewer movement whatsoever. So it'd back up the entire, that entire part of town. Then not to speak of the environmental impact of that broken line leaking into the river that is there. And what I meant by the enterprise, it bankrupted because we couldn't pay the bill. It would be so astronomically expensive just to clean and maintain, because we have to keep moving sewer. So it's significant and incredibly important that we address this.
Thank you. Do any of my members have any questions? Please raise your hand. Mr. Chadwick, go ahead.
Just, just out of curiosity, how many, if you know off the grid, if not, not that big of a deal, do you know how many people are on town sewer compared to how many people are not on town sewer?
We have about six thousand six hundred customers, probably about sixty percent of the town of Wareham is on sewer. Narrows, Handles, everything on that side, which is quite a bit of sewer area.
Okay. Thank you very much.
All set. Any other questions from the board members? Ms. Wertz? You're muted. We can't hear you.
This thing doesn't like to unmute. I just have a comment. The rescind article was referenced as Article seventeen. It's actually Article eighteen. So then the replacement article, this one we're talking about, is Article nineteen.
Right. Thank you. Any other questions of these gentlemen? No? Mr. Slaven? You're muted, sir.
Too many buttons. Not for this thing here, but I like in the future, we have the sewer commissioners, Mr. Campina, come before us. I'd like to discuss the status with EPA and the status of what the future is long term for the Water Pollution Control Facility. It's we're in a moratorium, but not today. It's not part of our agenda.
Thank you. A lot of the information that you're giving us this evening was presented several months ago at a Selectmen's meeting, am I correct? You had Russ Kleek, et cetera. And they came in and gave us a dog and pony show, which added up to mega millions. Am I correct?
Yes.
Okay.
You're correct.
Absolutely.
Okay. Any other questions from my board members? Please raise your hand. No? Then I would say thank you very much, gentlemen. Enjoy the rest of your evening. And we will bring in Elsa Lohman from Fussin' O'Neill. And if you are with Elsa Lohman and with Fussin' O'Neill, please raise your hand. And we're going to have Mr. Buckland in as well. And we're gonna have Mr. Buckland in as well. So Elsa Loman, Mr. Buckland. And no other people from Fussin O'Neil, is that what I'm seeing? Sandy Slav Slaven can um be removed from the meeting. Or removed back to the audience attendees, please. Ms. Loman, um you're muted right now, but you you're here by yourself.
Yes.
Yes, okay, great, thank you. Mr. Buckland and um. Thank you both for being here. Uh you have given this presentation in live form um. Earlier this month, the Tremont Nail Factory, I believe you have forwarded the slideshow to us. Um but I'd like you to give the presentation again. For the public, because not everybody was able to go to the. The the pro um presentation. And it is an extremely important and large project for the town of Wareham. So if you would introduce introduce yourself and your company and then go forward with your presentation, please.
Absolutely, and it looks like I have screen share capability on here, so I just want to confirm I'll be able to share the presentation, okay? Um so, good evening, thank you for inviting me to your meeting this evening, I appreciate the chance to get to be in front of all of you. My name is Elsa Loman, as Ms. Whiteside had mentioned. I am a an ecological restoration engineer, so my background is in civil engineering, I have both a bachelor's and a master's degree. But my focus has really been on ecological restoration over the past twenty years of my practice. So one of my particular focus areas is dam removal. Um and so we were very excited to be brought on board for this project to take a look at the Parker Mills Pond Dam. And determine what is the best. Course of action for the town. So our role in this is to. Assess and collate information and then provide that back to the technical advisory committee. Provide recommendation and guidance and then allow the town to make a final decision about which direction they'd like to go. So I do have a presentation to share, give me a moment as I get this. Up. See. We always have to make sure we don't share too much.
Okay.
When we're sharing our screens.
Now, when you had done the presentation before, it took an hour and a half and I'm. Or an hour and fifteen minutes, and I'm presuming that you're going to be able to do this in twenty or thirty minutes at most.
That is my intention, yes, so I do hope to move through this quickly. Um tell me, are you seeing the slideshow sharing on the screen or are you seeing my notes page sharing on the screen?
I see your agenda.
Okay. Give me just a moment.
This notes page is coming up.
Yeah.
And then the next page is the three people from the team. And if you back up one, then you have your cover page.
Wait just a moment to switch these screens, stop the share. I apologize for this, each platform is a little bit different. Okay, so, let's see if I do. One more second, I can change. Which screen is my primary, that should fix it, give me just one moment here, folks. We'll try this, and if this one doesn't work, then we will just work from the notes page. Okay, so.
There you go.
Did it? Okay, thanks for your patience, I appreciate it. Okay, so as um as was mentioned before, this is a presentation that I gave to the public the other day, I did update it a little bit. Um to make it more appropriate for this audience, but it does contain all of the information that was presented to the public. So. Dance this way. This was the agenda, welcome and introduction, we went through the background, we had had a previous meeting with the public where we had gone through background and existing conditions. So that was a very quick conversation, then we moved into a discussion of the alternatives and then wrapped up with the schedule at the end. This is a brief overview of some of the main players in our team, so I mentioned myself already. Um I have won a couple of awards that I bring that experience and that excellence to this project. We have. We share in the vision for what this can be for Wareham, and we're excited to work on that with the town. We're also working with our principal dean and we have Eileen Gunn, who um is in charge of our public engagement. That isn't our entire team, however, we have a number of individuals that are working hard for you, this is some of them. These are most of the group leads, we also have all of our team members as well. Many different elements involved in this project, it's not just H and H, it's not just ecological restoration. There is a heavy structural component, the Irving planning and design to make sure that we're complementing the local development. As well as our um stability evaluations and then the very important community outreach aspect. This is the technical advisory committee, I believe that you guys have a copy of this presentation, so I won't go through each of these individuals. But feel free to look at that later at your leisure. This is the outline of the alternatives analysis, so. Alternative analysis under different um settings can look differently, this is what it looks like for your project for us here. We started with a data collection and field investigation, moved into survey, we did set up a hydraulic model, which I'll show you in just a minute. Then we move into the alternatives analysis, that's where we compare all of the results of our modeling and our field data collection. Against the goals of the project. And then the final result of this project is a conceptual design, so the goal of this is to develop. To end this project with a conceptual design and a conceptual design uh report. That then we can take to funding agencies and get funded the next phase of the project. The objectives were wide reaching, in addition to restoring habitat, natural processes and fish passage. We also wanted to improve climate resiliency, which in this case is focused on flooding. We want to complement that future development. We want to improve um provide improvements to the visual and historic character as much as possible. Avoid the impacts to infrastructure and then maintain or improve levels of flooding at the site. In terms of an overview of the project, this gives you a broad sense of the scale of the project, right down here is Elm Street. This is Route twenty eight, can everyone see my cursor? Okay, I can tell I need to move more quickly. Um this is the empowerment that's formed by the dam, this is Route twenty five upstream. So this entire thing is our study area, it is not just this site right here. Um so this, I just went through the limits of the study, this is the first phase in a longer project. This goal, the end of this phase is concept design, the end goal is to take care of the stand, whether it be removal or repair. So in terms of my analysis points, this is what I'm looking at. There are a number of bridges shown in green located around the empowerment. Those are uh points that could be impacted by removal of the stand. There's the empowerment itself, what happens to the ecology and what happens to the water level in there. There's existing agricultural intakes on the empowerment, we found one. And then there also are the walls and the historic infrastructure downstream, in addition to the Wan Kinko River Channel itself. So these are all of the things that we took into consideration during this analysis. In terms of existing conditions, this is where I'll pick up some time and I'll move through this really quickly, so feel free to ask me any questions that you might have at the end. This is the watershed, it goes all the way up into the Mile Standish Forest, the. Um thing to note about this watershed, which is just over twenty square miles. Is that you're over the Plymouth Carver Aquifer, so there are perhaps a hundred feet of sand and gravel underneath this area. So a lot of the water that falls within this watershed actually infiltrates into the ground and doesn't make it into the water system. That becomes important later for fish passage. This is the flood insurance rate map, I really like to show this so that people know that these exist and they're publicly available, you can get this for your own um home. This shows the coastal flooding, so this flood boundary was determined based on coastal storm surge and wave runoff. This coastal flooding will still occur after the project, this is um as I said, is not freshwater influenced. However, we will be able to increase storage upstream and lower some of the flooding water surface elevations. Further upstream, but at this location, we are going to continue to see this elevation of flooding and into the future even higher with sea level rise. The dam itself is this entire embankment structure, many people think of just the spillway, but it is the entire embankment. The two spillways are located, um there's a dual base spillway that's located. Uh coming through the dam and it is immediately adjacent to that is the fishway. In this fishway picture, you can see this is the actual fishway, this is all attraction flow, so these are actually the spillways of the dam. So it's an earthen embankment with stonemasonry faces, that's one of the reasons why it's in such bad shape, it's earth and it's stone and it has many. Oops, excuse me, many seepage areas. It's four hundred feet long, nineteen feet high, actually higher than you might think first looking at it, and there's a total nine hundred ninety acre feet of storage capacity in the dam. It's classified as a high hazard intermediate size. I'd like to um point out, the hazard classification is based on the size of the structure, the size of the empowerment. And the potential impact downstream, this classification does not mean that this dam is a danger. It is not saying it's immediately in danger of failing, however, this dam is in poor condition, and that's why we're doing this project. Not only is it uh deteriorating, but it does not have the spillway capacity to pass the spillway design flood, which is often between the five hundred year flood. And something that's called the PMF, the probable maximum flood, so we can tell these two little spillways do not have that capacity. This is uh the geeked out engineering diagram, and we're going to detail in the interest of time, this is looking from above at the dam. There are is a section of tidal wetlands located downstream, really a beautiful area, we had our public meeting here and I felt so fortunate. To get to watch the sunset over this location. There's a small little pocket of bordering vegetative wetlands here and here, those um will track forward with our permitting, we shouldn't have. We won't have any need to impact anything down here, there may potentially be some access up here, but this is low quality wetland. And um and we would find some mitigation within the empowerment. We did do sediment sampling and depth probes, what we sat found is what is to be expected, that it was silt over sand primarily. Not incredibly deep, one to just under five feet deep, you can see in the right hand side these cores, you see the sand at the bottom, that really mucky silt at the top. We also did chemical sampling, everything within the data set was below all of the regulatory criteria. And the eco risk guidance, so that gives us a lot of uh flexibility in terms of what we do with sediment after dam removal. These are those bridges that I spoke about earlier, you can see all of them are fairly aging, they have shallow spread footings except for this bridge up here. All of these are going to be impacted by dam removal, I'll talk through that when we look at the alternatives. This bridge is on timber piles, and so it will be fairly safe if we drop water surface elevations. This is the Wan Kinko River Main Stem Route twenty five. Crossing. In terms of the structural evaluation, we did take a look at the general store so that we can understand what the impacts would be. Uh we also looked at the walls downstream, the um. The downstream walls are the Tremont Nail Factory building, as well as inside the Tremont Nail Factory building. We found that there were tremendous areas of seepage, not only around the original Penn Stock intake. But just through the interior wall in many different places, so dropping water surface elevations at the dam. Um will really help that, lowering those water surface elevation, so they're not right up against the backside of that is really gonna help this. But flood proofing measures will be necessary in some of the alternatives. There is fish passage, I won't go into this in detail, but do know that both the Division of Marine Fisheries, as well as the Buzzards Bay Coalition, has an interest in this area. And has been collecting fish counts for the past um fifteen years at least. Um. This is the fish counter over here, which is worth pointing out, it's really cool, um you guys have probably all seen it, I'm sure, but. The fish swim up through this little baffle, this is the eel pass through here. And then this I put in here as a point of note, this is actually the upstream fishway on, if you look in this graphic in the upper right hand corner. All the way up on the um, I believe it's the Tremont reservoir. Dam upstream on the backside of it, they actually have another fishway. And Mr. Slaven told me that upstream of there, there is considerable, perhaps even fifty miles of habitat, so. There is a lot of interest, I would say, by Division of Marine Fisheries, as well as Buzzards Bay Coalition. That works very much in this project's favor, that will bring funding to this project. In terms of the target species, we know there's A O Y, blueback herring and eel, so we set our design criteria around those species. We may also see shad and smelt in the future. This is how we developed the alternatives. So we looked at the impacts of riverine function, aesthetics, recreational opportunities, access, structures. Um I'll show you on the matrix, there's a couple of other ones in here, as well as cost and ease of permitting. And we used our hydraulic modeling, the structural evaluation, and then the site use assessment to develop a matrix, which you'll see at the end of the presentation. That depicts um documents, how each of these alternatives meet each of those goals. I'll go through this part quickly, most of you probably already know this, this is a picture of a dam removal that I include because it doesn't look like a dam removal. Dam removal can be very beautiful and look like a natural channel, this is also a fishway, and it doesn't look like a fishway, so there are um. A lot of opportunities to improve the ecological system here. This slide shows the negative impacts of dams, again, I'm gonna. Go past this one, I'm assuming that most people understand that nutrients are not able to get downstream, that water heats up. And of course, it blocks the migration of um the fisheries, so feel free to ask me any questions about that at the end. In turn, in terms of the alternatives, we did put together a hydraulic model, as I said, if you squint at this graphic, you can see each one of those red lines. Is a cross section in our model. Um the downstream boundary is tidal. And the future conditions analysis that we have done accounts for sea level rise in this location. So these are the flows that we came up with, we did a gauge analysis of the Jones River Gauge, based on looking at regional gauges. We determined that the Jones River was the most appropriate, so we transformed the um flow values from there. This is interesting, the twenty square uh mile watershed, you would expect the hundred year flow to be between four hundred and eight hundred CFS. Because we see it's on the lower end of that range, that speaks to that increased infiltration within the watershed. So the first alternative that we looked at was a partial vertical removal or a nature like fishway. So in this case, if you could imagine that this is the empowerment between Elm Street and um Route twenty eight. This would be uh the fishway that would be installed just downstream of Elm Street, it would look like a natural channel. Would be able to maintain ponded conditions upstream. So looking at it from the bird's eye view, nothing changes downstream. Upstream, you have somewhat of a pond, it's not as large as your previous pond. Here are the pros and cons. It improves fish passage at the dam, however, given those slow flows that we spoke about earlier. A constructed fishway is a little bit challenging, we might get down to ten CFS. Um during the low period of fish passage, and at that point, you need to really throttle the flow down to almost a foot wide. So it's a bit of a challenging design, however, it improves over what's out there right now. It somewhat reduces the seepage through the dam um and minimal reduction in flooding at this location. You would see a pond upstream and rapids downstream, you'd be able to kayak still, flatwater kayaking both upstream and downstream. There's minimal impact to all of the bridges. And therefore, this alternative is the least expensive because of that minimal impact. The majority of the work would happen right here at the dam. This graphic is just a zoomed up view of what that would look like immediately at the dam. And then this shows it in section, so this is the downstream section, this is the existing pond on the upstream side. This is Route twenty eight and this is Elm Street right here. So you would see the sloping channel downstream, a little bit of a pond between the two roads and then some pondy conditions upstream. This is the modeling that supports that. I put this in here because I geek out on it, to be honest. And just to show the process that we went through, if you go back and compare these, note that the profiles are flipped in opposite directions when you're looking at them. Full vertical removal is what many people think of as a full dam removal. Now remember, we said that the dam is actually this entire structure here. So the full vertical removal actually only removes the spillway section. What I should say is any, any channel that we replace here, whether it be a partial dam removal, full dam removal, will need to have a bridge structure that's at least 33 and a half feet wide. The Massachusetts Stream Crossing Guidelines require that our bridge openings are 1.2 times bankful width. And we've determined bankful width here to be 28 feet. So no matter what happens, you're going from that image I showed you with those tiny little spillway bays to a full open 33 and a half foot wide bridge at this location. This alternative, looking at it from bird's eye view, you would see a considerable change in the upstream impoundment. So you would have a scrub shrub type of wetland. That's the woody herbaceous type of wetland that tends to be about hip height, a little taller, very difficult to navigate and get through. And then that forested floodplain would, would move right in towards that river channel and it would be a channel upstream. You would be fishing, you would be hiking up there. You would not necessarily, you would not be flatwater boating for the most part. This is a picture of the Jones River. This is nearly exactly what you could imagine that upstream area would look like where you see the scrub shrub, wetland in the foreground, and then you see forested floodplain in the background. In terms of the pros and cons of this alternative, this provides the maximum riverine function. So the best fish passage at this location and then single stem cold water fisheries upstream of the existing dam. However, to get there, we have to manage that sediment that I spoke about earlier. Five to 10,000 cubic yards of sediment potentially have to be managed. It's clean, but it's going to have to be either removed or taken somewhere else. And that just adds time and expense to the project. I already mentioned what it would look like. In terms of the flooding, this gives us a maximum reduction to that coincident flooding right at Elm Street for those lower storm events, so less than the 100 year event. This alternative, however, has a maximum impact to the bridges. So this one up here is the one that we saw in those timber piles. That one, we can add some scour counter measures. It'll be okay. This is a crossing over Harlow Brook. We also have two Tohona Road crossings over here on the Rosebrook Tributary and then the Route 28 Bridge as well. All of those bridges under this scenario would need to be replaced. That's pretty significant. That's worth talking about more. We can bring that up later. Or in another conversation rather. So in terms of the cost, this is the most expensive. You have the sediment to deal with. You also have all of the bridge work to deal with. This is what it looks like zoomed in view. I apologize for our artwork. We do need to clean that up before the final report. This should be shown going straight through here. And this is just a river channel. It's not ponded. And then this is what it looks like in section. You notice now considerable distance between the top of road and where you're seeing the water surface down at the bottom and really no appreciable ponded conditions. Even upstream, it'll be more of a river channel than a pond. There's the modeling to support it. I put this one in here. This is the hybrid vertical removal. So this is something in between one and two. And I wanted to put it in here close on the heels of this other cross section so that you could see the subtlety. So see how shallow the water is in this section. Now the hybrid, we would do something at this location so that we're not a full full nature like fishway at the slope we had originally because that's very steep. It would be very challenging, like I mentioned with those flow conditions. So this is about three feet lower than we showed the nature like fishway and it's about three feet higher than a full dam removal. Under that scenario, we believe that we will be able to provide scour counter measures at the Route 28 Bridge and that it won't require replacement. Similarly, upstream, the other bridges, we believe that this water surface elevation provided under this alternative will give us enough flow depth at that location so that full replacement will not be required at those bridges. If anything, full replacement is required at Route 28 because we're dropping water surfaces the most compared to existing conditions. So this alternative leaves us with some flexibility. The way we wanted to present this with, to the public was we always want to make sure that the public feels heard. And so when we bring them an alternative or a series of alternatives, we don't want them to feel as though something is chosen already. We present the data and people make their own decision. So this alternative allows us that flexibility to take all of their feedback, all of your feedback and revise this so that we find the best middle of the road scenario. Meets most of our goals, but is not going to be as expensive as perhaps a full dam removal. If the town chooses to move forward with full dam removal, which is a valid and valuable course of action, then we would work with you to determine how you could fund those future bridge upgrades that would be required. So in terms of cost, this ends up being middle of the road. There's a close up of that one as well. This is the matrix, which does not play very well in this format, but I want to just orient you to it. Essentially, the alternatives are rated against each other. So on the left hand side, partial vertical, full vertical, and then the hybrid. Across the top, you have each of those goals that we discussed previously, permitting, riverine function, climate resilience, et cetera. This information within the matrix is simply the pros and cons from the slides that I went through. So we show them in this format so that we can easily compare them and then we rank them against each other. We provided this to the advisory committee. We also provided this to the public because much of this can be subjective. I might like a cold water stream. You might want a pond. And so that's why we put this out there to get the feedback so that people can let us know if we're targeting what they're looking for. And I can't find the mute button on here. I apologize. Okay. Thank you to everyone that has stuck with me this far in. So we have provided this matrix separately. I'm happy to provide it via email if you'd like to look at it more closely. You do have a presentation as well. If you wanted to look at it there. Almost done. So in terms of the schedule, we got kind of a late start in terms of contracting, but we've been able to pick it up and we're tracking really well at this point. So we're in the alternatives analysis. So we're kind of coming towards the end of that alternatives analysis as we move into October. This is where we'll be wrapping in all of that feedback and then we develop actual conceptual design plans based on that. So November and then just into the new year. In terms of our next steps, we need to refine, refine the design based on feedback, as I mentioned, and then we'll be developing those conceptual design plans. We do have a website. Please go on there and take a look at it. We keep it updated with updates and we also post all of our reports and the presentations that we've given. And I believe there's an email link on there and that comes through directly to Eileen and myself at Fussin O'Neil. These are the next meetings that are scheduled. It feels like this is coming up awfully quick. We have our next technical, excuse me again, technical advisory committee. I'm just getting over that summer cold. I don't know if anyone else has gotten it, but it lingers. So the next meeting is on October 12th and then our next public meeting is October 20th. And those are the two final meetings for this project. So thank you to all of you for listening and I'm happy to answer any questions.
That was an absolutely marvelous compaction of information.
It helps I've given it a few times now.
Yeah. Mr. Buckland, I'm going to ask you to chime in here, please.
Certainly. I think the project has been going on very well. We did get some feedback from the state to grant, gave us the grant for this study. And they're very pleased with the work that's been done so far and are looking forward to us picking an alternative to proceed with the, the bigger funding for actual implementation of the plan. I think this is, is an obvious example of, of, of public cost benefit analysis and the, the, the political realities of large infrastructure projects that we have to make a determination and proceed as, as we can towards a conclusion with our best available information at the time. And we see, I don't think it'll be exactly what's shown here at, at the endpoint, but we'll have something that makes sense and we can afford as well. That's one of the concerns I have is, is although there is a lot of infrastructure money that's been floated around as a result of the, of the federal government programs, that there is going to be a limitation on how much money we can raise to, to effects change and implement the projects that we want to see done here. So I think we have to consider that as part of this, this discussion. But I would like to have this Leckman give us a direction here so that we can have a concerted effort towards one, one goal or one, one concept that we can take forward into the, the funding process.
Thank you. Ms. Wertz and Mr. Slaven were both at the presentation. So I'm going to go to Mr. Chadwick first. Do you have any questions or any comments that you'd like to make, Mr. Chadwick? You're muted.
I have none at this time.
Thank you. Ms. Wertz, you had your hand up.
Yes. Am I unmuted?
You're unmuted.
Okay. I have a couple of questions and I'm not sure whether it's Ms. Loman or Mr. Buckland who should answer, but the first one I have is if we were to go to a full vertical removal that involves the bridges as well, would the state and the various potential grant providers consider those bridges as part of this singular project or would they look at it as a separate project or two separate projects?
Can either of you answer that question?
I'm happy to start, Kenneth, and you can jump in if I don't get everything. So it depends on the, the funding mechanism and the funding agency. I have spoken to NOAA about this project. There are a couple of NOAA grants out there right now and they're very interested in this location. If NOAA was funding the project, they would fund the entire project. And so therefore they would fund replacement of those bridges if we were successful in getting the amount that we asked for. Any one of those bridge replacements could easily run $2 million. I guess the major highways, $2 million. Maybe the ones on Tohona Road, I would say $500,000 per crossing at a minimum. So the price tag starts to get up there. So there are no guarantees when it comes to funding, but in terms of the federal funding, they would fund the whole package. Where you would see some increased cost in the project would be in the coordination with DOT. The Route 28 Bridge was replaced within the past decade. They are not going to be interested in doing anything on that bridge. So anything that happens there is going to 100% have to be footed by the project. The upstream bridges at Route, Route 25, those are older. The crossing over Harlow Brook is in terrible condition. There's reason to think that DOT at some point will be updating those bridges. So ideally you would want to start that coordination, get on the same schedule so you can make it happen at the same time. Trying to get that to happen with DOT is threading a needle. So it can happen, but it's a difficult part of the process. So at the end of the day, it's most likely the cost would fall on this project, not to DOT. Someone had asked that question specifically at the public meeting. If you were to get state funding, I don't, I'm not 100% sure in terms of the construction funding. So I think a really good, this is more than you asked for, but I think a really good next avenue for this project, the next phase of design is to be funded again under the dam and seawall program where it's currently funded. But then when you go to construction, this is going to be several to five, perhaps $10 million project with all the bridges, then you should be eyeing federal funds.
Ms. Buckland, excuse me. Mr. Buckland, do you want to add to that?
No, it's just that the, the complexity of these grants is that they are competitive as well. So we're up against the, the other projects in the, in the country that are looking to, and the state that are looking to do their own projects. And I think a cost effective project has a better chance than, than one that requires a lot of coordination and additional money.
Thank you. Ms. Wertz.
So yeah, so Mr. Buckland, when, so if that's being the case, then we're looking at a more realistic, say, a partial vertical removal or the hybrid. I'm not sure which one is better. And I'm not sure if one of them may not be worth doing. If it's the least, if it's the least good, is it worth doing at all? So that's where I really would account on your input on that.
Ms. Loman?
Let me see that I understand the question. So I, I think to rephrase, you were saying, is it worth doing the hybrid removal because you don't really get the best benefits of either? You're kind of compromising and sacrificing on either side.
Well, and I, well, Ms. Loman, I'm not sure. My assumption right now and can help me if I'm wrong with this, is that the full vertical removal is optimal. And it's the most difficult. I don't really know whether the hybrid partial or the partial vertical is the fallback. So, Mr. Buckland, what would you consider the fallback?
I would say, I think you're absolutely right. What we want to do is create the natural system once again. And that's the, the full removal, but our fallback position is a hybrid model, which allows us to negotiate some of the, 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 the components of the, of the project.
Thank you. You all set, Ms. Wertz?
I am. I'm, I'm dumbfounded in thinking about this. So please, someone else take it over. I might learn something.
Ms. Wertz, feel free to reach and, and any of you feel free to reach out to me separately via email or phone afterwards, if you think of other questions. I will admit, I hadn't expected to come to the meeting tonight with the outcome being a decision. So I, you know, I perhaps maybe would have presented it differently and I, I can imagine that maybe a little time to digest would be helpful.
Thank you. Mr. Chadwick?
Yeah, just in, in, not, not so much a question, but in my opinion, I, it kind of makes sense. I know it's going to cost more for the full vertical removal, but the reason, in my opinion, let's do it once, let's do it right. Let's not play games. So my kids are going to have to worry about this in 15 years and they're going to have to spend twice as much money trying to, excuse me, trying to fix something while we're doing it, half, fill in the blank. So in my opinion, I think the full vertical removal would be the smartest idea in this thing. I just want to state that.
Okay. Ms. Wertz and Mr. Chadwick, would you both mute yourselves, please? Mr. Slaven?
Okay, here we go, folks. I go back 15 years on this with the town. I originally chaired the Tremont Nail Master Plan Committee. And when we were doing that, we were also talking about the dam obviously back then. I then got involved with Beth Lambert from the state who does ecological restoration remediation. At that time, there was some very large NOAA grants available. We were talking actually about the Parker Mill Dam, the Tremont Dam upstream and the Horseshoe Dam, all three. There was funds available to do all of it at that time. I could not get consensus from the town administration at that time, et cetera, to, to make a move because this is a one time opportunity. People don't realize, but the Parker Mill Dam is the closest dam to the ocean in Massachusetts. It is like on the top 1% of dam removal that the state wants to see gone. That's one of the reasons why everybody is so interested in removing this particular dam. The, the issue with the state, those are state bridges. If we were to lower the thing all the way down, the state's going to have to fix. If we were to lower the thing all the way down, the state's going to have to fix the, the other bridges we're talking about because they're owned by the state. And if they're basically become a hazard, they have to fix it. We have enough leverage, I know you're going to disagree with me, but I'm telling you, I know. I'm involved with a, I'm involved with other parts of the transportation areas that can tell you how it's going to work. Right now, there's a lot of money for bridge repair, et cetera, in the state. Small bridges, et cetera. That's just one comment. But again, going back and working with Beth Lambert, working with the state agencies coming in. I am sure there's a way to make that work also. What I'm looking at is, as Jared said, I have a very simple philosophy. Do it once, do it right, or else don't do it at all. Number three, you know, some people might be concerned about it because you no longer have the pond, but the bottom line is we're restoring it back to original. And folks, this was a stream, a small river originally way back. And this is what restoration does. You bring it back to where it is, you get the fish coming up and down through there like it was, and you're bringing back everything. And again, as I've mentioned before, if we end up removing this dam and the Tremont Dam upstream at some time. You'll open up over 50 miles of navigable riverway. It's a lot for kayaking. Canoeing, et cetera. You would make Wareham a, a center for a large recreational area as well. So my philosophy is simply this. I would go for number three, which is the best one. It's the best overall solution. If we're unable to get funding, then I would go back to the, what we call the hybrid and see what works there. There's no reason not to try for the brass ring, as I call it. And if we can't, we take the financial. Excuse me, position that we go for the next one down. To do it, you know, as, as Jared wanted to say, I use the word, I'm not afraid to say it, half-assed, makes no sense, no. As I said again, I'll repeat, do it once, do it right. Wareham has a history of doing it once and doing it wrong. Because they try to save money and do it on the least expensive way. It never works. We have a Fram commercial, we fear it for you is pay me now or pay me later. Every time you pay me later, the cost is just. It's so much higher, it's ridiculous. And as you can see now with the cost of all the raw materials and everything else that. As a simple explanation to show you, the original 628 road project. Was going to be $15 million, which went from before the stop and shop all the way down to the Boeasset Narrows Bridge. By waiting 10 years to get this project off the ground and actually doing, we're over $20 million now. And it only goes to basically. Down by where the new 40B is.
Head of the Bay.
Yeah, head of the bay, whatever you want to call the road there. And the bottom line is we're doing less than half of the original project. So again, I suggest that we basically go for three. If we can't make it work financially, if we have an issue that we can't force the, the bridge repairs from the state, then we try number two. And that's my, that was how I would vote for this as of today. And again, I have 15 years into this, so I have a lot of history with it. And, uh, you know, I, I really know what's going on with this. And I understand some people, there's only a few people actually on the pond in the first section. If we ever remove the actual Tremont Dam upstream, we affect some more people. They probably get more land. And what they have now, and I'm, I'm laughing because it really isn't that way, but. You know, the pond will disappear, just so people know. And that's one of the drawbacks. Thank you.
Thank you.
May I add on the heels of what he said, that both marine fisheries and NOAA. Would like to see a cold water fisheries, they'd like to see a single stem channel in the upstream. So in terms of getting support and funding for this project, this would be the most fundable by those agencies.
The full dam removal.
The full dam removal, correct. And Mr. Slaven, just to confirm, when you were saying number three, you meant full dam removal, correct?
That is correct.
I am of the same mind as Mr. Slaven. I. Have been aware of this issue for several years. When I was in a previous profession. I. Knew a gentleman who had an MIT education and owned his own engineering firm. And he told me, and this goes back 40 years. 50% of the bridges in Massachusetts were unsafe at that time. That was 40 years ago. So. I really don't want to be driving around on unsafe bridges. And I really don't want to do something in. In. Let's do it. My, my politer way of saying is, let's do it right. And that would be my viewpoint. But I will accept a, if there's any further discussion, raise your hand. Seeing none, I will accept a motion.
I'll make a motion that we, we seriously look at basically option three, the full removal. If we're unable to come up with a financial funding necessary, we go to what we call option B, which would be the hybrid.
I'll second that motion.
Motion made and seconded to go with the full dam removal, hoping that we get all of the funding that is available. And that has been seconded. Is there any further discussion on that motion? Mr. Buckland, would you like to make a comment on the motion?
I think it's a very good motion.
Thank you. Okay. Um, I will go around for a roll call vote, Ms. Wertz.
Yes.
Mr. Slaven?
Yes, we'll give Mr. Buckland a raise too.
Actually, please give him a.
Hey, excuse me, Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Myself, yes, 400. It is the full dam removal is the preferred route for the Board of Selectmen as of this evening. Thank you very much, Ms. Loman, it's very nice to meet you and thank you very much for your presentation and thank you very much for being able to squish it into a reasonable amount of time.
Thank you for having me.
Present a lot of information, you had sent it to us, we did have that color coded. A longer piece of paper, yeah.
Yep.
So you've, you've done a very good job, I think, of, of giving us all of the options and the information. And we will say good night to you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it, good to meet you all.
Nice to meet you. And Mr. Buckland, you're next. Because we have some articles for you to talk to us about, which are on the town meeting. Articles 21, 22, and so on. So I would ask you to. Go through them. As quickly as possible.
All right, Article 21 is the amendments to zoning by law, Article 1381. This was recommended by the Board of Appeals. And it's essentially one word change, so that the.
Somebody needs to mute themselves, I'm getting feedback. Mute yourselves, guys. Gals. Go ahead, Ken.
Uh, it's a, it's a one-word change, so that a non-conforming lot would have. Uh, it would have to conform to all zoning requirements. Uh, uh, effective on a certain date, rather than just setback requirements. So this gives the, the Zoning Board of Appeals more leeway to. Uh, approve. Appropriate development on small size lots that are non-conforming.
Thank you. If you have a question of Mr. Buckland on this particular one, please raise your hand. Seeing none, Mr. Buckland, I'll ask you to go on to explain the next one.
Article 22, Amendment of Zoning Bylaw to Add A New MS4 Regulation Under Article 12. This is the EPA program that the town is required to follow. This is for pre and post-construction. Standards. That require. Protection of water resources and appropriate construction methodologies and. Treatment. To reduce the impact of stormwater. And including the, the water resources of the town.
Thank you. Do any of you have any questions of Mr. Buckland on this one? Please raise your hand. Seeing none, Mr. Buckland, I'll ask you to move on to the next one.
Article 23 is the zoning bylaws to, to set a moratorium on marijuana social consumption establishments. This is the social consumption establishments are the, the essentially the. The, the, the bars for marijuana. They are, that we had a, a moratorium on it, on, on social consumption establishments. Previously adopted by town meeting back in 2019. And that ended in 2020. We're talking about doing it again because the state still hasn't. Created their regulations that, so we don't know exactly what is involved and we maybe don't want it anyway.
Thank you. Does any of you have any questions of Mr. Buckland on that one? Raise, Mr. Slaven, is that your hand? Go ahead. You're muted.
I appreciate Mr. Buckland went ahead and put that in. This was my request. Again, because the information I gave the Board of Selectmen. Over the last few months on this, where the state still does not have a fixed. Information as to how the social consumption will work. It will be restaurants, will it be liquor stores, will it be bars? Where the location is going to be? You know, there's so many different questions right now with zoning and everything else. We're allowed usually the, I believe the Attorney General will allow us to have a one-year moratorium. So when we get this done, we'll be able to issue licenses and a proper manner, that's the way we go. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions on this particular article? Seeing none, Mr. Buckland, I'll ask you to move on to the next one, which is the signs.
Yeah, Article 24 is the zoning by law for signs. This is another one of Selectman Slaven's requests. This is that window signs, signs put in the windows of commercial establishments cannot take up more than 25% of the window glass area. So that there will be light and visibility into the. Into the businesses.
Thank you. My understanding was that. Go ahead, Mr. Slaven.
I think you were just going to say, what happened was for some reason, when the sign by law was recodified. And changes recently, for some reason that 25% was eliminated, which previously, previously existed. The main reason for this is if we have a public safety, whether it's fire, ambulance or police, having to go into an establishment. If they can't see inside the building to what's going on there, it presents an extreme danger and a safety issue. And I've actually been out in Nevada one time where we stopped after, you know, we got our rental car and we stopped to get gas. And there was a robbery in the variety store. But we're getting gas and the police were outside, they couldn't go in because the windows are fully covered with ads and et cetera and everything else. And it caused a real problem. I think there was a serious shooting because of it. So all this is doing is bringing back what existed before. And it was simply a mistake of eliminating it. And I won't call it a scrivener error, but that's as close as I can get to it.
Thank you. That was exactly what I was going to say. Are there any other questions on this one? Comments? Nope. Mr. Buckland, could you move on to the, the biggie in terms of length?
This is Article 25, which is an amendment to zoning by law, Article 6. This is the, the whole Article 6, which is the density and dimension regulations. Those are the, the, the sizes and the, and the, and the setback numbers that, and the, the development density. Uh, allowances under zoning, uh, under all the zoning districts in town. This, these are just corrections that. A whole series of scrivener errors that. Were existing in this, this section of the bylaw. And the intent is to, is just to provide clarity. And consistency in information so that it's clear to everybody what the dimensional requirements are.
A copy of this is on file with the town clerk's office, am I correct?
That's correct. And it's also on, on our planning board website as well, too.
Okay, and, and the, in both of those documents, the red lines show the changes, am I correct?
That's correct.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the rest of you about this particular one? Seeing none? I think Mr.'s. I think, I think, I think you're done.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your input. Have a nice evening.
You too.
Thank you. Um, okay. Uh, we'll go back, we'll, we'll march through the last part of the. Agenda, which would be 7G, which would be to accept a donation. Then we'll go on to discuss. The things that we've just heard, if that's okay with you. So I'll accept a motion to accept the donation. To the Wareham Free Library in the amount of $102 from the Stop and Shop Community Bag Program for the Wareham Free Library gift account.
Motion so made.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded to accept the gift. Is there any further discussion? I will go for a roll call vote. Ms. Wertz?
Yes.
Slaven?
Yes.
Chadwick?
Yes.
Myself, yes, 400. Thank you very much. And now we will go to. Discussion of. The items that we have heard tonight. What I would suggest was that you take them. In chunks, in other words. Perhaps. The, we look at the CPA funds first, the four. Which would be Articles 7, 8, 9, and 10. Yes, Mr. Slaven?
I would like to make a motion if it's, if it becomes acceptable. I would make a motion that we. Vote positive action or favorable action for Articles number 7, 8, 9, 10. 15, 16, 17, 18, 19. 21, 22. 23, 24, 25.
Second.
Is there a second to that one? Okay, is, or do any of you want to discuss any one of those? And if, I have these flies flying around here. If, is there any one of them that you would like to discuss? And we'll just pull it out of that motion. Nope, okay. Then I will go for a roll call vote. There's a motion with a second. To recommend favorable action on all of those as listed. Mr. Slaven?
Yes.
Ms. Wertz?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yeah.
And myself, yes, 400. Wow, okay. Couple of things. Uh, Mr. Where am I? Mr. Sorry.
48 hours.
Yeah, 48 hours. I sent you something. Earlier this afternoon. It was an article that I ran across and it had to do with. Possibly the, as we know, the Pilgrim Nuclear Plant in Plymouth. Had, was taken offline in 2019. And there's a company that's being. That has been contracted with to decommission it and dis. Take it down. Guys, somebody has. Back. Feedback. And so. I, to be honest with you, wasn't as aware about this as I should be. But I'm going to actually read into the record what happened the other day in Plymouth. People who live in southeastern Massachusetts are vowing to block a proposal that they insist would be illegal and hazardous. Which is to dump up to 1.1 million gallon, gallons of radioactive wastewater that is left over from Pilgrim's, Plymouth's Pilgrim Nuclear Power Station into Cape Cod Bay. A rally was held at the Plymouth Town Green, Town Hall Green Monday evening before people voiced their concerns. During a meeting of the Nuclear Decommissioning Citizens Advisory Panel. And a quote from somebody from Seabor Bay. At the end of the day, Cape Cod Bay is an established ocean sanctuary. And another quote from an individual who's an attorney and a member of the public interest group, which is Pilgrim Watch. His quotation is, that fact in of itself says that they're violating the Massachusetts Ocean Sanctuaries Act. That explicitly prohibits discharge of any commercial or industrial waste. Residents of the South Shore in Cape Cod argue that dumping processed radioactive water will severely harm the seafood industry, tourism, property values, and public health. An 11-year-old said, my little brother and I should be able to swim without worrying that the stuff dumped in our ocean could hurt us or kill us. The company that has been hired is called Holtech. They are overseeing the decommissioning of the Pilgrim Nuclear Power Station. And they have not yet ruled out the discharging of the wastewater into Cape Cod Bay. During Monday's meeting, Holtech representatives did agree to perform split sample testing. Which allows the company and an independent laboratory to conduct safety samples on the water first. Some people, however, argued that the dumping, dumping proposal was flat out illegal. It, if it is in fact illegal, we will not discharge the water, said David Noyes, Holtech's senior compliance manager. If it is determined to be illegal, we will not discharge the water. Those who oppose the plan are hoping Massachusetts Attorney General Maura Healey, who is currently running for governor, will eventually intervene. The executor director of Massachusetts Seafood Collaborative said, she has the absolute power to do this. She has the absolute power to enforce the laws that Holtech agreed that they would follow when they signed the settlement agreement. that Holtech agreed that they would follow when they signed the settlement agreement. Um, and then three members of the Massachusetts Congressional delegation, Elizabeth Warren, Ed Markey, and William Keating have vowed to hold Holtech accountable. Then later on, at the bottom of the article, um, News Center Five contacted Healy's office for comment. And this is the comment. Our office will do everything possible to hold Holtech accountable and ensure public health and safety throughout this decommissioning process. We are prepared to take action to halt any violations of state and federal water discharge permits. So, um, in two thousand twenty, the Attorney General's Office reached a settlement agreement with Holtech to remedy shortcomings in the Nuclear Regulatory Committee's regulatory scheme and to ensure compliance with Massachusetts laws. This agreement secures environmental, public safety, and financial protections for residents during the decommissioning of the Pilgrim Nuclear Power Station. The settlement agreement also includes compliance measures stricter than federal requirements. In addition, Pilgrim's Clean Water Act permits, permits prohibit the discharge of polluted spent fuel pool water and wastewater generated by the decommissioning process into Cape Cod Bay. I for one think that I would not want that in my backyard and certainly not in my front yard. Um, but I, if any one of you would like to make a comment, um, please raise your hand. No? Miss Wertz. You muted.
That's the problem with making a motion or speaking is it takes thirty seconds to unmute this thing. Um, the, it's important that you brought this up. Um, this white side, the whole issue of pollution to water in this area, whether it's the aquifer or the ocean seems, it, each one of them seems to be getting attacked more and more every day. I don't know that towns in and of themselves have necessarily been successful in stopping some of this pollution. And I just wonder at some point how we work together as a region of the state, if not the state as a whole, to get this stuff to stop. So, I mean, you know, whether it has to do with aquifer pollution from discharge from poles from solar farms or whether it has to do with nuclear discharge into the aquifer or into the ocean. It's critical. Um, and so the question is, how do we go forward?
Okay. Um, my suggestion would be that you authorize me to write a somewhat stern um, letter representing, oops, representing the our position, which would be that we either do or don't wanna see it. However, hold on a second. It, it, so this is not on the agenda and it would have to be a confirmatory vote next week, as you know.
Put it on next week's agenda.
Okay.
So, so can I make a motion that we write a letter uh opposing them dumping into our waters?
Yeah, I can. May I have a second to that?
A second, yeah.
Mr. Bowen, do you wanna weigh in here? Please.
Oh, uh, yes, Madam Chairman. Well, nobody wants three eyed fish like in The Simpsons.
I was gonna say it. Gonna say it.
Oh, uh, yeah, I I think it's appropriate for the board to express a consensus for Madam Chairman to send a strongly worded letter to the Attorney General encouraging her strict vigilance over this process. Uh, and then if you feel the need to confirm that vote next week, that's fine. But uh, yeah, you're right, this is important.
So it would be fine to do it under the forty eight hour. I only became aware of it today, unfortunately. I must say that I should have been paying more attention, I guess.
Well, oh, I mean it, look, you know, whatever the half life of this stuff is gonna be a lot longer than any of us. So, sure.
Okay. All right, um, I have a motion in a second to, um, did I get a second?
I think you got two seconds.
Okay, so I got a motion in two seconds to um allow me to write a strongly worded letter to the Attorney General on behalf of the town of Wareham objecting to any things that might pollute any of the water. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, great. Uh, we'll go for a roll call vote and this will be on a confirmatory vote on next week's agenda, please. Um, Ms. Wertz.
Yes.
Mr. Slavin.
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick.
Yes.
And myself, yes. I'm sorry, I'm laughing at the three eyed fish. Um, no town administrators report, so we will go to liaison and initiative reports. Mr. Slavin.
Uh, Community Events Committee met uh yesterday. Uh, we have no new uh reimbursements received yet, so we're still sitting here waiting for some people to submit. Uh, tomorrow, Wednesday, I have the Serpent Monthly Commission Meeting that I chair. I have Senator Rodriguez, who's the Chair of Ways and Means, is coming uh to visit us and to talk about opera money and infrastructure money. Uh, so all twenty seven communities that Serpent represents will have a chance to ask questions as to how things are going. I'm also going to try and see whether or not they're serious about taking the opera money, which they're kind of holding not true what to do with, which is the second trench of this money, and and actually have this money flow through the planning organizations.
You got feedback, guys.
It's not me either.
Okay, Alan, go ahead.
Okay, and on Thursday, I'm going again with the uh Executive Director of Serpent, the two of us are going to uh Holy Cross uh University up to the center there. And we'll be meeting with the Governor, Lieutenant Governor, and all the key secretariats of the state to talk again about opera, to talk about infrastructure money, to explain how we can apply you know, all the different pieces of what's available and the best way to go take care of it. I will try and get all the information recorded down for to the board, to Mr. Sullivan, other parts of the town that's necessary sometime later Thursday. That's it for me.
Thank you. Mr. Chadwick.
I've done, um, just, just wanted to share that with you guys if you can see it on there. That's the three eyed fish for you.
Here.
Thank you very much.
Sorry, I had to.
Anything else? No? Okay, Ms. Wertz.
Judy, we were all thinking of the same thing.
I, I know we were. Yes, and and it's, it's great that the youngest person on the board got away with it. Thank you. Ms. Wertz.
I um attended the planning board um last night and it goes on on dealing most, dealing with any number of things that are going on after mul- over multiple timeframes. And so I don't see anything new happening there. Um, except for it's a, it's a tough job. I'm being a select person is a tough job. I think being on the planning board might be tougher.
All set? Is that?
That's it.
Okay, great, thank you. Um, I don't think I have, oh, yes, I can tell you. Um, next week, as Mr. Slavin said, we are having our meeting on Thursday. Uh, WCTV will be able to cover us. There are several other, or at least two other meetings at the same time. But we do have um other individuals coming in to speak to us on behalf of their articles. Um, and because Mr. Pigeon a- and the Finance Committee put together a booklet for the town meeting, it's important that we get these votes to him as quickly as we can, having done our homework. I would also point out that the planning board, that the zoning articles all will have public hearings, every single one of them. And so you can watch the town website or look in the newspaper and you will see when those hearings will be held. Um, there also will be a hearing actually during our Board of Selectment meeting for the harbor services permit for the harbor um waterways rewrite of the rules, because that's a bylaw rewrite. And that will be on the eleventh. So that will be a hearing at that time, too. We are coming into busy season, um, as you all know, um, Ms. Slaney pulled it up. I don't know, I think it was a hundred envelopes, because we are coming into the renewal time for all of our licenses. So our office will be extremely busy. Um, and I appreciate the fact that those letters went out and it is up to the holders of the licenses to get their applications in back to us in a timely fashion. They must all be renewed before December thirty first. And um, time flies. I also want to um mention that it's unusual and really sad that the maritime provinces in Canada got really slammed by a hurricane. And it looks like um our neighbors to the south in Florida may get really slammed by a different hurricane. So my best wishes to all of them and I hope that they are all safe and sound. And then hopefully Ian blows himself out before he makes landfall. Is there any other business to come before this board? Hearing none, Mr. Slavin.
Motion to adjourn.
Not debatable. Motion made and seconded is not debatable. Ms. Wertz. Mr. Slavin.
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick.
Yes.
Myself, yes. Good night, Wareham. Thank you very much and enjoy the rest of your evening and stay safe. Thank you.
Be safe, everybody.